I'd like to call this meeting of the Elsa's Planning Board to order, March 7th, 2018. Can we introduce ourselves, please?
Mike Howie.
John Delaunay.
John Fink.
Jim Barkhouse.
Roger Lozard.
Thank you. First item, next item of business is adoption of the minutes from February 8th. Is someone prepared to make a motion regarding the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Any discussion about the minutes? Anyone in favor, please? Thank you. Third item of business, and I'm sure this is why everyone has come here this evening, is for the election of officers for the planning. Actually, this is not a public hearing at this point, and only we can do this. I'm sorry to disappoint you. Is there a nomination for the officer of chair?
I'll nominate John Fink.
Any discussion? All in favor, please? For vice chair?
I nominate Darrell Wilson.
Second.
Discussion?
He should have been here.
Yeah. And for secretary? Aren't you the current secretary?
I think I, yes, I am.
Mike has done such a great job.
Yes, I second that. You couldn't escape. All in favor, please? Thank you. Now we'll get on to more pressing business. Next item is final plan for a major use site development titled Woodlawn Museum Visitor Center for Hancock County Trustees of Public Reservations, the Black House Woodlawn. The proposal with approximate square footages is to remove the existing carriage barn of about 2,500 square feet and the caretaker's hives of 13, 25 square feet and construct a visitor's center of approximately 8,000 square feet and expand the workshop of 700 square feet. And a 155 acre parcel is listed on the city records at 19 Black House Drive off Route 172, Surrey Road, tax map 26, lot 57, in the neighborhood zone. Is someone representing the area?
Yes, here, Noel Murphy from Odin's Allo Architecture.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Well, since we last met in October, we had a site visit with you all at the end of October of last year, and in the interim, we have been working on two fronts, primarily one coordinating and finalizing with the city's technical review team, the sewer demand requirements for the project, as well as water supply for fire protection. We have achieved resolution on both of those items, and I think you have letters confirming that in your packet. And we've also gone through the process of submitting an application to the Historical Preservation Commission, and the hearings associated with that. And last week, the Board of Appeals granted their certificate of appropriateness. And that was really what we wanted to get accomplished before we came before you again for the final review of the project.
Okay. Were there any particular changes since the last go-through?
The, there are a few minor changes. I think most of the changes are not substantive changes so much as coming to resolution with the technical review team on a couple of items. One change is that we have eliminated, we originally had two fire hydrants, we have now one fire hydrant in the proposed site plan, something that we worked through with the technical review team. In addition to that, we have come to an agreed upon calculation for sewer demand, basically how many gallons of water will be put into the sewage system based on the number of plumbing fixtures in the project. There was some back and forth on that and how to make that calculation. And then, the historic review process also was kind of an ongoing process, and, you know, we're happy to say that we do have their certificate of appropriateness after several meetings and eventually the Board of Appeals hearing on, I think it was last Monday, February 26th. Otherwise, the site plan, as they were submitted in the preliminary application, have not changed in any substantive way.
And how are you coming on the fire suppression board?
So the, there is, we did a flow test, as was recommended by the city, and the flow tests, which was done several months ago, determined that we did not have appropriate fire flow up where the building is. It sits up on the hill, quite a distance from the road. Since that, we've worked through a number of options, and the owner will be installing a new pipe from the city's water line in Surrey Road up through the site, and there's been an analysis of that, and with an eight inch HDP pipe, we believe we can get the fire flow we need, which is 813 gallons per minute. There's no certainty of that, of course, until it's installed, and so the, kind of the disclaimer that's on the plans and the agreement we have with the city is that it will be installed and tested to verify that we can get the 813 gallons per minute. We think we will, we hope we do. If we don't, then the owner will be responsible for looking at alternative ways of getting that flow up at the building, either through installing a pump down by the road, or it's possible we may need some kind of onsite water supply and tanks or something like that to get the appropriate volume up at the building.
Question for, actually Dwight, what happens if, and if I may, what happens if they can't achieve the flow? Does the building permit get held up, or?
I think we're probably going to hold that permit until that's done. They can still start their groundwork and clearing and all of that, but we have, we kind of, might kind of push it back and forth because, you know, if they come in and we have a letter from, you know, legal representation saying that they're willing to take the risk, that we may issue a building permit. But we'd have to sit down and talk about that.
Thank you.
I have a question on that line. In the letter that Mike and the chief are, I think, our identical letters, excuse me, in the second paragraph, you say if the 813 gallon permit minimum is not achieved, the project is brought back to the planning board for review and discussion of the alternative measures. And then down below in the last paragraph, in italics, is what has been put on the plan. However, that paragraph doesn't mention anything about being brought back to the planning board. I think, I mean, I think that's a big omission, that it seems, you know, there's not guaranteed that 813 gallons is going to be achieved, and also from reading the information from the water superintendent, that it may also affect other services in the area. I mean, I think that's a big issue to leave out there hanging and not be reviewed by the planning board. And I'm not particularly too happy that it's not on the plan, that if you don't achieve that and it goes back to the fire department, it doesn't come back to the planning board. I guess I'll ask, any particular reason why that, it was mentioned in that paragraph but was not put in on the plan?
I can't answer that question. That's a good point. I don't, and I can't speak for the water company. I just, Reggie not here, I can't do that. I do believe that the only reason that it would have to come back to the planning board would be because of the item of having to put a fire pump somewhere either on the property or attached to the water supply, city's water supply. That's the only reason that I can think of that that would be there. Other than that, there really isn't any other reason for that on the plan, to be on the plan.
If I may.
Because the only thing they're putting in there, John, is just an eight inch line and nothing else, really.
But I mean, this is a letter that both you and the chief have written.
Right.
That if they didn't achieve it, it would come back to the planning board.
Yep.
And now you're saying, no, it's not going to come back to the planning board.
Well, if I may, I don't know if there'd be a good reason to come back, because the plan, you know, if this were to be approved, and they didn't achieve the water flow to the satisfaction of both the fire department and the water department, then they fault the project. Because it all depends upon that.
I think I can answer your question. The reason why it would come back is that, after looking at this, is that if they do not achieve the 813 gallons a minute, we will not be able to grant them the waiver for.
For the road.
For the road. And the road would have to be widened according to the NFPA 1 standards and et cetera. That may require it coming back to you for revisit. That's the only reason why.
Okay.
If they don't achieve the 813 gallons a minute, and cannot come up with any other way of doing it, then it will have to come back to you, because they're going to have to widen the road and deal with that and that and that and that.
So, and, so what I would recommend is that, and that has other possible repercussions, so what I would recommend is that you consider approving with a condition that be added to the plan that says that if that is not met, that they need to come back to the planning board. Because it has other repercussions that would definitely need approval. And along those lines, if I may, we did not issue a TRT memo, we issued a memo just kind of like summarizing what's been happening to just remind you, since it's been a long time. We would like you to consider rescinding a waiver that you had issued back in, in October, on the basis that the only, the only people that had jurisdiction to give that memo was the fire department under NFPA, and not a, under your jurisdiction, so that would clean up, because that's all related to what was just brought up with the, also the width of the road. So that, so it could be a condition that if it's not that, it comes back to planning board, and it could be also, you'd have to consider rescinding that waiver.
Further questions from the board?
I was just reviewing the, your peak flow estimates, I mean, basically, it's based around the public restroom or restroom facilities. Is there any opportunity to reduce that capacity to take the peak flows down? Would that impact that?
Well, I, I believe that the, on a daily basis, that flow is going to be quite a bit lower. The reason that they've been classified as public restrooms is because there are events at the facility, and there'll be times where there is a heavier load, but that's really the, kind of the worst case scenario. But on an average day, the flow will be far lower than that. All of the, all of the fixtures will be low flow fixtures. The objective is to stay as low as we can, but the state has a way of calculating this that doesn't account for kind of a sustainable approach. It's, they have their standards, and that's what you have to use to calculate what's going into the system.
As far as the waiver that the city would like to rescind it because we didn't have the authority, we can do that now before proceeding, which will be in that aspect of it all. Is someone prepared to make a motion to rescind the waiver for the width of the road, the fire, fireway?
It may be in your motion, attach the waiver that was given in October 4th, so it's clear, whatever we're talking about pertaining to the, to the road width.
In that case, let me, let me move that we, the planning board rescinds the motion to, the October 4th motion regarding the width of the road for fire access. And it's only the fire department can properly do that.
As granted.
Excuse me?
As granted on October 4th.
Yes, I see. Is there a second to my motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? All is in favor, please? Thank you. Okay, that clears that up, we can proceed.
Thank you.
Now, before we get going, since there is a pause here, this is a public hearing, and anyone may comment upon this matter, I ask that before you speak, you be recognized by the chair, then go up to the podium and state your name for the record. Does anyone wish to speak?
My name is Penelope Houghton, and I've arrived a few minutes late, so I hope this is the right moment to bring up some various concerns I have about the project at Woodlawn. I am a neighbor, I live on Surrey Road, and probably my overarching concern is what kind of neighborly relations Woodlawn has extended to its immediate neighborhood. In the past eight to 10 years, I've made three different phone calls to Woodlawn with some concerns I had, and didn't feel that they were addressed in a way that, in my opinion, took into account my concerns. And so now that there's a bigger project that's pending, my concerns are higher, that I would like to know that Woodlawn is ready to consider the needs of the neighborhood, and how this project might put more load in different ways on our, on our properties and on our quality of life. So in particular, I'm concerned about traffic patterns, having increased traffic flow. I have heard that there may be an alternate entrance, and that may be resolving that problem, but I don't know enough information to be sure about that. I'm also concerned about fire safety. One of the calls that I made on two separate occasions to the director at Woodlawn was during a time when they were increasing public activities on the property, specifically weddings and other events, so larger scale events like I expect they're going to have planned with this facility. And I expressed concern because, one, having the general public in and out for events, I was concerned that they didn't have any signage up around, for example, smoking, and we live right along a very, a fringe of woods between Woodlawn and Westwood, and on numerous times, there would be people driving out the driveway and throwing cigarette butts into the woods, which are full of dead wood. So certainly a fire hazard there, quite close to the neighborhood. So I'm concerned to know that they are taking adequate steps to try to educate the public about the fact that, you know, certain behaviors need to be limited in a residential area, drinking, smoking, garbage, things like that. But also that one of my concerns was that when they did the forestry project there 10 years ago or so, that they never completed the cleaning out the dead wood, which is mostly along the woods that about the Westwood property. So I'd like to know that that's going to be addressed, because there's certainly a lot of fire hazard there, as it is now, and I'm just concerned that that will potentially be aggravated with more public use. And then, more personally, another issue that I had brought up at the director and did not get a response that I felt met my concerns, was the water flow the other way, which is the water flow coming down the hill. We've had increased pressure on our property at the bottom of the hill, basements flooding, gardens being flooded. With some of the change that have already happened up there, I'm guessing, without being an expert on this by any means, that the pattern of water flow has been altered. So in the, in the 12 years that I've lived in my property, I've seen more water coming down the hill. Now, we're having more water problems, I know that, just in general with climate change, but I do feel that we need to address what may happen with construction and pavement to the water flow dynamics for those of us who live at the bottom. And our property's outflow pipe is at the base of Woodlawn's property on the Surrey Road, and that's what I had specifically brought up with the director about making sure that that would be open and cleared, and that hasn't been done, so we have to go physically dig that out ourselves to make sure our basement doesn't flood anymore. And I just am concerned that that's going to become a worsening problem with the plans as I understand them. So I think for now, that's, those are the main concerns that I wanted to bring up.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to comment? There are no one. I shall close the public hearing. Planning board, what would we like to do?
Well, I, I have that question about the traffic. I didn't see anything in here about taking some projections on traffic, because you're going to have more special events, like the person just saying that it's going to be more public. Anything been done about booking a traffic pull?
Yes, in the preliminary, in the original application, there is a letter dated September 14th, 2017.
This one?
Nope, there was a previous.
Okay.
I think Michelle has a copy.
I did.
It's, trying to give you some guidance for where it is in that document.
Okay.
It's pretty close to the back.
Yeah.
And the projected increase is 97 trips per hour at the peak, so that would be in the instance of an event and at a peak hour on Surrey Road.
And that peak hour, what would be?
I don't know the peak hour, it may be in this report, I don't know it offhand.
Sunday. Or the report is Sunday.
I mean, peak hours are typically morning and evening commute times.
Is it the peak hour of the generator, or is it a peak hour of the use we're talking
Peak hour of, excuse me, of the use of the property. In this case, the peak hour is actually on a weekend. It's on page two of three midway down below the table.
Sunday and.
Peak hour of the generator, I think, is an AM weekday peak.
Now, is this true that you'd be having public events, like weddings, wedding receptions, things like that? You'd be writing it out?
Yes, that's one of the uses of the facility.
Okay.
They're already doing that, though, right now.
Well, I understand, okay. But I assume with this, the center, you're going to be, the volume is going to be quite heavy in certain times, so special events is going to be quite heavy compared to what you have right now.
Yeah, I believe there will be times where the traffic is heavier.
That's what I'm concerned about, the traffic, yeah.
So can I say something about the traffic?
Sure.
I don't have it in front of me, but, so, we look at the peak hour of the use, the peak hour of the use is Sunday, and then you look at how much that generates to see if it necessitated full-blown traffic study or not, which remember that this did not. And then, what we also look at, if it necessitated a study, we look at the peak hour of the use in relationship to the peak hour of the generator, which right now are not concurrent, they don't, they're not at the same time. So when we look at traffic, we look at impact outside, what happens to, for example, that generator, and I think the conclusion was that there was going to be no significant impact to that road, and no mitigation was recommended. And I'm going by memory, because that's several months ago, but I saw some of the numbers go by me really quickly, and they were quite low.
So, for the.
In terms of traffic, when we talk about traffic.
So for the city, you're, you're happy with?
Yeah.
Both use?
Yeah. And it doesn't peak at the same time.
Do a full-blown study, right.
Yeah. So it means that, that, like, if it was peaking on an AM weekday, when it's backing up, that's a different situation. But they're peaking on a Sunday, and the peak of that, of that road is most likely an AM weekday peak.
Now, how about a Saturday, or something like that?
It's not weekends.
Especially during the summer.
It's not the weekend. It does not peak on the weekends.
Okay. Yeah, I live right up there. Oh, you mean, our current traffic?
The generators, 179, 172, 172, right?
Yeah.
I've been writing about 179 all day, so, 172, yeah.
Now, I do have also some concerns about water runoff. I live up in the neighborhood, across the Surrey Road, from the Woodlawn, and it did change a few years ago, the water flow. It actually floods out part of my lawn. It has flooded a neighbor's basement. I don't know if it's all runoff from the Woodlawn. I do know when they started digging out the ditch more by the road, it seemed to add a change in the little brook that comes across, that runs behind my property. And there is a change in flow. The driveway does create a runoff that comes right down Laurel Street, which is across the street, and does damage to the front of driveways and things like that. Is there any way of helping to divert that water coming off that hill? It's, it did change a few years ago, and I have concerns, I have to, actually, I have a ditch dug across my lawn to keep it from flowing through my property.
On the in avenue, we've worked pretty closely with the city to try to identify what is causing that issue on the in avenue, and whether that's actually water from Cortland coming down, or Woodlawn, or actually our neighbor's driveway is coming down. So we've worked pretty hard, and I know Head of Fine has worked to really study and combat this issue of water flows. On the out avenue, the creek that comes from the, the old farm pond out back, comes down, crosses underneath the out avenue, and there's an old stone drain that gets bogged up and barreled down, and so that is going to be replaced with a new culvert and possibly a catch patient basin to effectively take care of that washout issues and all the water issues on the, on the out avenue. So, in our reports, I'm not sure exactly where, but Noel can talk to you, you've got the plan for.
There is a stormwater plan, I think it's drawing C4 and C5, but essentially, as Joshua was saying, the, kind of the movement of the water, culverts and things will be modernized, and the increase in stormwater due to the new construction and the parking area, that water, rather than flowing the route of the current water, is actually going to be collected in the, the front lawn of the property, and as much of that is, is really to slow that water down, so it doesn't travel all the way down off of the Woodlawn property. And it will basically, it will, rather than flow off the property, it will stay put and slowly matriculate into the ground. So that's how we're dealing with, with the increase in stormwater. Given the size of the Woodlawn property, the magnitude of this construction is actually quite small, so there isn't a huge change in the amount of water that needs to be moved around the site. So, one thing is to modernize kind of how we're doing it, and the other one is to, is to keep a little bit more water onsite, so it's not impacting the road and other properties.
If I might point out, our scope of review is limited to this project involving the new visitor center, and the stormwater management plan covers the differences between what exists now in regard to that area of construction and the future, which shows that the flows are no greater after construction than before, which satisfies the city ordinance. What hap, what might hap, what problems might be that exist before this project is beyond the scope of the board. I'm happy to hear that Woodlawn is trying to mitigate that as much as possible, but that is not something that the planning board can base a decision on at this point. That would be, I would imagine, on repeal, quickly shot down.
Well, there, I might want to add too, in their original packet, they have a, I think a well-done, long-term inspection maintenance plan for cleaning out ditches and whatnot, basically a groundskeeping. I thought that was well-done. I think that will address many of the issues that have been raised, but it's just a comical point, is that there are other people. But just a comical point is that there are other people in other parts of the country who would kill for a water problem, so. It's a nice problem to have.
Mr. Jones, just two things. I want to just say that we have, you're right. We are, we are concerned, the ordinance deals with the creation of the additional runoff created by the development. Nevertheless, the city is aware that, you know, rain patterns are changing and we are aware there's been issues and we have met with the applicant. The public, not public, board director, but the highway foreman has met as part of the TRT with the applicant to discuss ways and make sure that this would not be a recurring problem. It would be solved at one point. And we were reassured that their intent is to keep that soil and that water on their property to the best, you know, as much as they can and try to solve the problem. So we, even though it's not part of the ordinance, I want to be on record to say that we were aware and we are working with the applicant to try to find a solution for that problem. And I always also want to say that previously when I mentioned the generator, I wanted to say the road, the corridor, not the generator. I'm sure you guys got it at one point, but, so just if the record could show this in the minutes, makes sense.
One more question.
It's been a while since we had a visitor over there. And if I remember right, additional parking, which is where the caregiver, I guess, is on the land, you weren't going to tar that, correct? It's all going to be in the field.
Well, there are seventy primary spaces, parking spaces. Forty-six of those will be on a compacted, kind of crushed stone surface, which by kind of letter of the law is impervious.
Right.
The other group of those will be on reinforced turf, which is pervious surface. So we did our best to use as much pervious material where we could. But there's maintenance requirements, plowing things that, you know, we couldn't do at all as impervious. And I don't think the code would allow us to do that.
Then that is all covered by the stormwater plan.
Yes, yeah, that's all part of the stormwater calculation. That's right.
Got a question. A couple of questions. Mr. Hangy, has the fire department determined what the load, number, capacity would be for the building? Isn't used whether it's for education purposes or?
Are you talking about?
The number of people that could be in the.
People that are in there? Yes, we did do that. I don't have that number right on top. Yeah, it's, it depends on how they, depends on what they do with that exhibition hall. It would be one figure if there are tables and chairs in there. And then if they were removed and just used it as an open facility, without tables and chairs, it would be a whole different number. If it was just concentrated use, that's determined by the state fire marshal's office, it goes well over three hundred. And with the tables and chairs, it's less than that. It's probably a little bit less, a little bit, a little bit more than half of that. So you have the capacity for, remove all things and just no tables and chairs in there. In the empty building, you have a capacity of over three hundred in that building.
That's standing at seven square feet per person.
Seven square foot per person.
Now, is the capacity of the building something that the developer determined how many parking places you need? Or have designed this for?
Yes, we did, although the, there's several different ways of calculating the capacity of the building. One is for egress, which is kind of the highest standard. But we did use, and I believe it's in the ordinance, there's a certain number of spaces per person. And we calculated the number of people. And I think that's on the cover sheet, but yeah, we did do that calculation. The difference being that it is not going to be common that the entire building is occupied to the maximum capacity at one time. For fire, you need to assume that, but for parking, we assume that if there's an event, for instance, you're not also going to have every other space in the building full. You're not going to have the maximum occupancy in the office and the gallery spaces, et cetera. So that was an assumption we made when we did the parking calculations.
One thing.
We did the park, if I remember correctly, that was a long time ago. But if I remember, we had a long conversation between seven or fifteen square feet, I think, if you're sitting down with round tables. And I think we had agreed to kind of a middle point, kind of accommodate that, realizing that none of the parking standards are done on a full-capacity basis. It's not what we do.
And I'm certainly not proposing adding more parking, but I would like to point out though, considering the surfaces that you're using, whether it be the crushed stone or the grassy area, I would imagine none of these areas are going to be lined like a asphalt parking lot. And we all know, I mean, you take a hundred-spaced parking lot at Walmart or Home Depot with brand-new white lines, and you're not going to get a hundred people parking there. Because some people just can't park at parking places. So even though the back lot, I think, is, is it eighty spaces and then twenty-one? You know, chances are you'll never fit eighty cars in there because people just don't know how to park.
Well, our strategy, and you're correct, it won't be striped due to the surface material, but we're going to do granite curb stops to indicate each individual space. So there is an awareness for how you should park and how much space each car has. I don't think we can control human behavior too much. But, but there is also, if there is a larger event, there is an eighty-car overflow lot in the north lawn, which Wood Lawn currently uses for larger events. So I don't think there's any fear that there'd be a shortage of parking when there's a high demand for it. I'm glad you brought it up, John. It's one of my pet peeves when people don't park where they're supposed to park. So what we do now for our special events that has been very successful is we have a parking attendant tell people where to park. And that pretty much covers it.
Helps keep them in a straight line.
Except for Mr. Shea.
Okay, thank you.
Is someone ready to suggest a way we could, we shall proceed? Or, at our last, on October, we have determined that the preliminary plan was complete. Is there any questions to any of the aspects of that plan, such as the traffic study or drainage that need attention? Or I can go down through the requirements and we can.
Well, are we certain, maybe, is a question to Michelle, is a lot of the waivers that were requested, have they all been granted or interacted with the city? For example, the road width waiver.
Yes, I think there's two waivers related to lighting, which I think would be granted by this board. And the others have been dealt with primarily with Captain Hangy.
Will the waivers we granted last go through in October?
Did we grant the lighting waiver? I think we did.
Yes.
Yes.
According to the minutes, we did.
Yeah, yeah. So the answer is we're all set.
Okay.
If I may remind the board that you may want to add a condition of approval pertaining to the, if the A thirteen gallon per minute and twenty PSI minimum residual pressure is not met, then it would be remanded to the planning board.
So is someone prepared? Daryl is not here, so I feel we're crippled just a little bit. You're actually going to make me do something, aren't you? I should have, I should have not accepted the chair again. With regard, motion with regard to the final plan of the major use site developed at Wood Lawn Visitor Center. The planning board approves the plan under site plan review, which is chapter, chapter six of the ordinance. It's an allowed use in the zone. And there is a condition that if the water pressure and flow rates are not achieved for the fire suppression, that this will come back to the planning board for review of the then-not-allowed change in width of the road for fire access. That help keep the fire department happy?
Yep.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Is there a discussion? All in favor, please? Need to ask for opposed, then. Thank you very much. And with any luck, we will not see you again. This is not in any way casting aspersions on you. I just hope it's all successful.
As do we. Thank you.
Thank you.
No one's here for anything else?
The ones that are, they're the major.
They're part of the actual test?
No concerns of the public.
None that have demonstrated.
So they do already have public filings and stuff like that to write it out?
I guess so. I live across the street. I've never seen one.
I know, you've never seen any overflow cars or anything?
I go up there every day.
You've seen it too much.
Yeah, that's funny how you get to it, you know?
Fairly big.
Yeah, I made the comment that the water problems that I'm having is they haven't changed their site in years. They're not doing that.
The next item of business is final plan for a major use site developed in a major subdivision tied to Atlantic storage for Atlantic landscape construction. The proposal is to build eleven self-storage buildings and four residential duplexes, total of eight units, at one-twenty-four Bangor Road, formerly New Land Nursery and Landscaping, located on two parcels, totaling nine and a half acres, tax map fifty lot sixty-eight and tax map forty-one lot seventy-nine in the open zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Steve Salisbury and Greg Johnson. We submitted to you a revised traffic narrative, water sewer letters, and a revised site plan and a lighting plan around just the office building, which we just all talked about last month.
If you want to talk, tell, describe.
Yeah, we can run through real quick the changes in the site plan. It's easier that way.
So, my name is Greg Johnson. I'm an engineer for the applicant. As Steve mentioned, some of the questions with the board last time, we submitted a revised middle and then there were some, I think, what were called improvements that came out of our subsequent TRT meetings. With the board, one of the questions we called was about lighting. And that surrounded specifically the residence, which is being converted to an office. And it was the board's request that we make sure we have adequate lighting for the parking in that office. And so it was a residential use. There are several existing, like sixty watt bulbs on the outside. And when we did look at that and then we looked at the standards of the parking requirements, we added a dark sky compliant hooded lighting fixture at that parking area based on that. So you probably have in your package a revised lighting plan that looks to this, which is showing that area which the lighting was added to. The other, I guess I'll go through them, changes which maybe resulted, I think, from the TRT meetings is the, one of the requests is to make sure that the wooded buffers on site. Remember, we talked about how the stormwater now shoots off the site and ran toads of brook. And in this redevelopment, we've, I guess, developed in a way to bring it to rain gardens and filter it. And then those are spread out into wooded buffer. And it was concerned whether or not that wooded buffer would be impacted at any time in the future. So that's memorialized by pins to be set at the corners of it and some signage around it. People know it's not a place to go get firewood.
Can we show you a sign? Just to make you very happy if you show the sign. Because I think it was, it's really considerate of the applicant to have done that and I'm just, I can see it. So the idea is if we're going to ask for undisturbed buffers, let's not like do the witchcraft and think it's going to remain on buffer just by magic. None of the word works, but you know what I'm saying. So might as well just do it and I'm just very pleased with what Steve has done. It's awesome. Why are you laughing?
You made her happy, Steve.
For once, I made her happy.
Now you're trading the sign pollution, though.
What?
You're trading sign pollution.
They don't go until the dark.
I try to get one for free than work.
So we think the signage will adequately denote no cutting of firewood in the forested buffer. So those are marked out. Other things.
Now, all these signs are in English, right?
Uh-oh. Well, Steve has multiple, multiple signs, right?
They're all English.
They're all English.
And what will ensure that people actually read and understand the sign?
I can only do so much.
I think they're braille, too.
No, they're not handicap compliant.
But I think they made staff happy.
You think?
It's a free strand of barbed wire around it.
If you can make Michelle happy, then we're all happy.
So the other improvements, I guess, that came out of it, we had talked about what was happening to the entrances, which there are several entrances to this property on the highway. DOT had been out there, made recommendations. We were using the entrances that we all agreed were providing the safe ingress and egress. The other entrances, which we said discontinued, that's been further to where they actually will be curbed by. So there won't be a way to pull off there in the future. They're going to physically construct similar type curb across there. So those are indeed shut off and not able to be used. Of other change, we indicated the proper stores type fittings to be included on the hydrants through working with the fire department. And the rest were updating notes in both the application that reflected those minor changes regarding the entrances, the adding of the curb. And that's the substance of the changes, I think, since we were last here.
Okay. Questions in the board?
I'm just going to carry that. If I remember correctly, the lights on the building, the lights were up like about four feet. Is that, do I remember that correctly?
Yep, they're up at about five feet right at the top of where the door would be.
Okay, I was thinking they were down below the top of the door. I just kind of wondered why you wouldn't put it at the top of the door.
There.
And then Steve, last meeting, I think I asked you about whether there was going to be a fence around it?
Yes.
I was thinking you said no, but I saw that picture.
There is our landscape plan, which represents the fencing we put up around the front and the side. I don't believe it's going to be all the way around.
No. Now, would there be a gate across the road to restrict access during?
No, it's going to be open twenty-four hours a day.
I hope it looks that good. Myself, I.
The owner doesn't have a concern about people that are not renting there, getting in there any time of day and security.
Not by knowledge, I know. Well, he's certainly capable of planting the trees, so. Being in that business.
Yeah.
This was his proposal, so this is what we represent the landscape will look like when he's done.
Now, he's not gonna bring one of those apple trees down from up north Elsworth, is he?
No, no apple trees. We do have a list of species in here somewhere.
Anyone else with questions? I'm sorry that we can't harass anymore.
Oh, that's what's up.
He's got a couple more agenda items.
The night's still young, that's right, the night's still young, so.
We have further chances.
Yes.
What would the board like to do? Is there any member of the public here who wishes to come? No, the chairs are not doing that. Public hearing is not enclosed.
My kind of crowd.
You could have arranged for them.
I could play some bands, yeah.
And primed them with things to say.
Or primed them with something.
Yes. Anyhow, is anyone prepared to, the last goal through on this, we said the preliminary plan was complete. They have addressed the issues that we brought up. And does anyone have anything of concern on the, on traffic or stormwater maintenance, which are the big things? Or the lighting has been addressed? Does anyone have a motion to make?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We accept the final plan for a major use site and development and major subdivision titled Atlantic Storage for the Atlantic Landscape Construction. And the proposal is built us eleven self-storage buildings in four residential duplexes, total of eight units at 124 Bangor Road, formerly the New Land Nursery and Landscaping. And it's located on two parcels totaling nine point five acres on tax map lot forty, uh, fifty slash sixty-eight and forty-one slash seventy-nine in the urban zone.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? There are none. All in favor, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item of business is amendment to an amended subdivision plan titled Maddox Avenue Extension Phase Four. Plan file thirty-five dash thirty for Wayne W. Wright. The amendment relocate boundary lies around subdivision lot eighteen, that is tax map thirty-four lot forty-eight. Changing it from a ninety-two acre parcel in the neighborhood zone to one point four eight acres. And someone's representing the applicant.
Steve Salisbury for Wayne Wright. So we had an eighteen point two lot subdivision. Lot eighteen are modifying, retaining a piece of land from Toothacre in this area and conveying Mr. Toothacre some frontage on American Avenue in exchange. So that's, that's, that's the modification of the subdivision is the, is the addition of that piece of property to lot eighteen.
And is lot eighteen currently developed?
No, it's going to be. That's part of the reason to expand the lot.
And this is a Maddox sales test on that?
Yes, yep. There's been a subject design already in the general area where the test bits are shown. Leach field staked out.
Any questions from the board?
I have to get one word. The rearranging of the lot lines would then allow the Toothacre lot to have frontage and access on American Avenue?
Yes.
So they would be able to put a house there to come out onto American Avenue?
They could potentially, yes. He's got enough land there. He could subdivide his lot. His house is approximately in this area, he's kinda right in the middle of the lot, but he could do something if he'd so choose to do so. It's a public street, so, you know, the adding of another access point to the street won't, won't overburden it.
No, no, it's just a little odd that when the subdivision was built, and there's deed restrictions, but in essence, this one would not have.
He would not be covered by these covenants, that's right. With the exception of that little triangular piece of land that was part of lot eighteen.
Hey, Steve, you said American Avenue is a public road now?
Yes, it is.
It has been taken over?
Okay, it got over by the city.
So there'd be no road maintenance agreements or anything like that?
Nope.
Needed for the Toothacres?
Nope.
Any other concerns? There's an amendment to a subdivision. Review is confined to the facts of the amendment. And the board has expressed no concerns. I certainly don't have any. Someone ready for a motion?
I'll try it.
Okay.
Are you gonna do a public hearing?
Yeah, public hearing, yeah.
Okay, is there any public who wishes to comment on this? No, there is not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The record will show that there was no people willing to comment.
Steve, you're gonna have to come up with more controversial.
I'm sorry.
You're gonna have to come up with more controversial things.
I'll work hard on it, sorry.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the amendment to the amended subdivision plan entitled Maddox Ave. Extension Phase Four. File plan thirty-five dash thirty for Wayne Wright. The amendment would relocate boundary lines around subdivision lot eighteen, tax map lot thirty-four forty-eight, changing it from a point nine-two acre parcel in the neighborhood zone to a one point four acre parcel.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, does this mean you're leaving us?
Oh, no. That's why I'm there, I gotta stand.
Okay. Next item of business is amendments to an amended subdivision plan titled Blueberry Hill Two, Plan File Twenty Dash Forty-three, for First National Bank and H. Ray Graham. The amendments would A. retroactively approve lot two, zero point six four acre lot, tax map sixteen lot eight dash one dash one, created in two thousand and one, with a transfer from I Realty LP to Graham. And B. create lot three, a point one seven acre non-conforming lot to be merged with First National Bank's abutting one point three two acre lot, tax map sixteen lot nine. All the subject land is in the commercial zone. Is someone representing the applicant?
Yes, good evening. My name's Patrick Lyons, and I'm here on behalf of the First. I'm an attorney with E&amp;P Buddy, and I practice out of the Bangor office with Andy Hamilton and also out at the Ellsworth office here. Before I get started, I'd just like to say I'm excited to be here because I'm a new resident of Ellsworth. My wife and I moved here a year and a half ago, and we purchased a home on Joy Way out on the Surrey Road.
Is this a plea for leniency?
If it gets me some, yes. Hopefully, I won't need any leniency.
You're welcome.
Thank you, yes. So it's my first time appearing for the board and with the city staff, and I just wanted to introduce myself and say hello. And I'm excited to be here for a good client on a good project. And of course, Steve is here as well, representing the First, and he's the one that drafted the amended subdivision plan. So the First is seeking approval of two amendments to lot lines for the Blueberry Hill Two subdivision plan. The, as, the First is the owner of one ninety-four Beech, Beechland Road, which is kind of depicted to the south. Well, I don't know if that's south. I guess the, to the east of lot three, you see it there in the little corner. And the proposal is, as we said, for the point one seven acres to be merged with the First's existing property with approval of the amendment to the subdivision plan. As of now, the First has a purchase and sale agreement with the current owner of lot three, which is subject to approval of this amendment. The other issue is lot two, which back in two thousand and one, I Realty sold what is depicted as lot two to Ray Graham. And in doing so, it appears that Mr. Graham did not seek planning board approval to amend the subdivision plan. So we, working with Michelle and Steve tonight, we're here as part of the new amendments to the subdivision plan. We're also doing some housekeeping to the transfer and creation of lot two back in two thousand and one. I'll note that the First was not involved with this transfer, you know, eighteen years ago here. It was solely between Mr. Graham and the First. Mr. Graham has given the First and E&amp;P Buddy authority to appear on his behalf tonight, seeking this amendment. So this amendment we're seeking is really housekeeping modification to lot lines to the Blueberry Hill subdivision plan for both lot two and lot three. So in summary, we're requesting a modification to a previously approved subdivision plan and seeking lot line changes. The proposed changes are in compliance with the Ellsworth ordinances. Sub, Blueberry Hill subdivision two was previously approved by the planning board, was found in compliance with all relevant Ellsworth ordinances, especially chapter fifty-six of the UDO and then chapter twenty-eight of the subdivision ordinance. So for those reasons, we request your approval tonight.
Question, lot two. At the time that was created, that was part of lot one?
Yes, it was. So lot one is the, yes, it was originally, the I Care sold that lot to Mr. Graham, and then subsequently, I Care sold the lot one to the current owner, J. C. B.
I notice that lot two has no access.
Lot two abuts Mr. Graham's property to the east, which has access to the road.
He, he, so Mr. Graham, under other LLCs, owns three lots on High Street? Yeah, on Route Three Side.
Yes.
And so that's how he has access? So there's not a landlocked lot?
Is there a right of way to it? A recorded right of way?
He's got an fee ownership for those three lots.
He's, he abuts, he was an abutter.
Has he merged them? I mean, in theory, that lot could be.
If it was.
It's an independent lot with no access.
So.
Would we have granted that if he had come for an amendment, is my question.
Well, so what happens is it's not triggering subdivision review because it was not within the five years. It was only triggering the creation of a lot after the five years. So it would be a lot line revision in an approved subdivision.
That's because you're still creating a lot with no access.
Well, the lot has access because he owns three abutting lots. He's the owner.
If he hasn't merged it with the others, and therefore, if lot two were to be sold to another party.
He would have an issue in turn if he tried to sell it individually, but where it, it's adjoins one of his existing lots.
So is he using that lot, White?
Uh, he has some storage on it, but we've done this numerous times before, Mr. Chairman. People have bought that lots, we never really required a right of way for those lots, but I do understand your point.
Yes, I understand.
That's why we have these good attorneys who would catch that up at title time and take care of that.
And we're, and we're luring them into residence in Ellsworth.
That's right, he says.
So let's go back in time, just so the fun of it. So they came for just that little sliver of point seventeen known as lot three right now, referred to as lot three. The, so what we did is we backtracked and, and looked at the history of the subdivision and found there was a previous violation, and we wanted them to correct the violation before they continue going. I don't know if, I cannot talk that what would have happened eighteen years ago, a year before I got here. But it's, you know, they're already using it. They're abutting land that they own that have plenty of frontage on High Street. Then after a fact.
I would think that if he goes to sell it, he, whoever's buying it would ask for a right of way in.
Or a helicopter pass.
In a helicopter.
Or both.
Yeah, or both. But yeah, that's, I've seen that before also with back lots, as long as you're abutting. They don't seem to really care.
Okay. Does anyone have a, oh, is there any, anyone wish to comment on this matter? No public hearing is closed. Happy?
Yes, I am.
Anyone have a motion regarding this proposal?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the amendment to amended subdivision plan titled Blueberry Hill Two, Plan File Twenty Dash Forty-three for First National Bank and H. Ray Graham. The amendments would A. retroactively approve lot two, a six point four acre lot, tax map sixteen slash eight dash one dash one, created in two thousand and one, with a transfer from I Realty LP to Graham. And B. create a lot three, a point one seven acre non-conforming lot to be merged with First National Bank's abutting one point three acre lot, tax map sixteen lot nine. All of the subject land is in the commercial zone.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
If we could change the word accept to approve and not use that word anymore, I would really like it.
Approve, then.
Approve.
Okay.
And our superior recording secretary here, who is left-handed, I would point out, which is the superiority. Anyhow, any discussion? All in favor, please? Well, there, your first appearance has been successful.
I'd say so. Thank you very much.
So we have my lots to sign. Do we, can we list on my lots we have to sign for the record? We have Toy in High Street, what do you have?
Do we collect all these now?
Atlantic Storage and Maddox Extension are all my lots to be signed tonight. Do we have my lots, the Blueberry?
I believe so. Steve, we have my lots.
So Blueberry, Maddox, Atlantic, and Toy.
There's what?
Toy in High Street, come on, ask somebody else.
Yeah, somebody else has a question.
Do you wanna make a motion to adjourn after we're done?
Jim, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn as soon as we sign the my lots.
Mike, 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 the meeting's not done.
Mr. Brockhouse has made a motion that we adjourn as soon as we sign the my lots. Is there a second? All in favor, please? Thank you, okay.